This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. This is the regular March meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 15, 2022. We're meeting in the bookroom of the library at Fairmont. My name is Steve Deming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting towards. First item on the agenda is roll call. Malavika Shrikanthi?
Yes, present.
Amanda Motto?
Here.
Maggie Motto?
Here.
Judy Lance?
Here.
Craig Cooper?
Here.
And myself, Steve Deming. Sylvia Roba, Joe Heinrichs, and Tom Engelmann, I guess are expected, but not present yet.
Sylvia.
What else?
Sylvia.
Sylvia's on. Oh, hi Sylvia, can you hear us? Let's call it a roll. The record show that Tom Engelmann is not present. Hi Sylvia, can you hear us? Okay, just called the roll, so I have you in here now.
I'm here.
Okay. And Joe did, Joe Heinrichs, did say that he would be here, but thought he might be late, so we'll proceed. Also, I'd like to introduce other folks who are here. Jeff Collins, Library Director, Lexie Riley, Assistant Library Director, Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager, Tracy Moore, Development Officer, Marion McKinnon, our City Council Liaison, and Casey Shipley, Recorder. And also along with that, along with the introduction of our new Library Director, Jeff Collins, who we're very glad to have here, I'd like to introduce him. And if you have any comments or anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, thanks Steve. So I just wanted to say hello to everyone as well. Thank you very much again for this opportunity. Excited to join the team, obviously. I do want to just give a quick shout out to the Library Administration and the stellar staff that we have that have been able to fill in in the interim from when Amy was retired and then for the last six weeks stepping up. So everybody did a really great job with that. Thankful to them and thankful for our staff and community for welcoming me first right at 30 days now as well. So I'm thrilled to be here and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has at this point, otherwise just being through the process.
Thank you very much, Steve. Welcome. I didn't realize that it actually is your one month anniversary. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next item is the Consent Agenda. We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So.
I second Steve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just one item in discussion I wanted to point out, just in case you refer to it later, on the Budget Recap Report, the Levy Balance Amount down the last dollar figures on the right-hand side there, the 1,011,867. There's a lot of ones there, but there is one missing. That actually should be 1,117,876. So just pass that along. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Okay, here we can see none. A call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes, Steve.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Public with Comment. Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on. Reports and Communications. First item there is Friends, and I have no one here to represent the Friends, so I will fill in just the real highlights of things from their meetings. They had their financial advisor there and from Quad City Bank of Trust. And so he gave them a quick review of their financial position and delivered to them financial reports on their investments and those sorts of things. And they are in good shape, so. Then they also had a presentation from the Early Literacy Coordinator, the same presentation basically that we had from Allison McGahey. So that was nice. And let's see, as far as other things, they were talking about their annual meeting is coming up in April. I believe that that's still pretty, that now that's pretty much just a regular meeting of their board. At one time, it was a dinner and things, and pretty nice, but attendance kind of fell off and kind of made that look more expensive than it should be for people. I guess for the number of people who attended and thought it was worth the investment. Anyway, that used to be very nice. Let's see, I think that's highlights from their meetings. Next item, under Reports and Communications is Committee Reports. Finance, anything from Finance, Tom?
No, just go back to your comment about the Budget Recap. We're two-thirds of the way through the year. And if you look at our spending, our total Levy spending was right at two-thirds, so it looks like we're hitting right on the mark.
Okay, thank you. Next item, under Committee Reports is Personnel. Amanda, anything?
No, the only thing we would have is that we, the Personnel Committee plus Steve, will be meeting right after this with Jeff to discuss goals and objectives, but other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you, Amanda. Next item under Committee Reports is Advocacy. Malavika?
Thank you, Steve. Something I want to thank Lexie and all the staff. We meet every month for the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee. I'm liaison on the committee, and they all are doing excellent, excellent work. Thank you, Lexie, and Paul. We've entered various things that the staff has brought up and, you know, progressing towards making it happen. And the first thing was, you know, testing, we have testing for various open positions at the library, you know, so, you know, how are the tests, you know, how people comprehend, how they understand, so trying to see how can we make any changes to it. So we're working on that, trying to think of how we could advertise positions that are open across various platforms, so they could reach various community people within our community and outside. Outreach has been doing an excellent job. Of course, we all know with all the social media platforms that we talk, advertise on. But they have this very committed young lady, student from, I think, Davenport West, if I'm not mistaken, and she is helping us do various translations of, you know, signage and things like that. Very, very committed young lady. She's helping us with that. I had gotten in touch with Target. Target is very much interested in helping with volunteering and things like that, and I have asked, I've not got a reply yet, but I just told them, I'd come and sit in your office together. We are trying to see if we can get some kind of contribution, donations, especially now Fairmont has the summer picnic? Shall we call it a picnic? No, we had that summer getting, right, the community party, right? That we have during summer, so they can come in and, you know, help us. So I'm working on that. The other fantastic thing I came across was, I was online for some reason, and I see that Augustana, across the river, of course, had this link done by the Augustana University Library, which said, "How do you use your Island Public Library?" Now, of course, I took that link and I have shared it with my colleagues at SAU Library, because for the last two, three years, we have been working with our outreach department here. That's the TPL Outreach Department, and we've had Brittany, Allison, everybody coming in and doing student memberships. So we have concentrated on student memberships. So how can we go further and let students, staff, everybody know, hey, this is, you know, this is something of a resource that you can go to. So everybody at my library has loved the lift guide. We probably are going to work on one, you know, how to use your Davenport Public Library situation. This was interesting. Second last point in my list, I was at this little luncheon to honor Davenport High School students selected by different Davenport schools, and it was organized by the National Society for the Daughters of the American Revolution. Their horrible chapter is their local chapter. And they had just glorious words to talk about our eastern branch of the library, because they meet at the eastern branch, and they were so, so appreciative of the fact of, you know, how our library is, the approach, you know, things like that. And I got to know them. They absolutely heavily use our online library reservation system, room reservation system that we have. So it was like so pleasant. And during that, I had this short opportunity to let them know about our techno items that we have in the library. They were like flabbergasted that we do all that. So it was excellent. I lost my head, but I had to write that. This is last month, the month before, I don't remember. The city of Davenport invited me to talk on their podcast, Pulse, I believe. And they called me to talk because I was one of their first student members, the cohort Davenport U class. And we talked about the library. We, of course, showed off that we were recording that podcast on the equipment that the library has within our library premises. And I know, and Steve, please, sorry, Jeff, do correct me, I think they will be in the library for one of the sessions, the Davenport U, the upcoming Davenport U, they'll be in the sessions. So I talked about, you know, how we go about the forms that we have on the City of Davenport's website to be a trustee, you know, that kind of stuff and, you know, various things. So, and again, during that, during the Pulse broadcast, again, I pushed our techno library, which many don't know. So this is all Steve and all of us. Thank you.
As I recall, Davenport U is what brought you to the Library Board of Trustees?
Yes. And that's how that podcast went down. You're clear. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, Malavika. Okay, next item is Record Report. Do you have anything you want to amplify or add to your report that you sent out?
Yeah, thanks Steve. So included in your board package was a report on activities for leading up to the month of this meeting in March. And just a couple of things to highlight. Obviously, we're very busy, and I'm very thankful for all the staff and their patience in taking the time to train me and acclimate my transition. So hopefully, things are going okay in that respect. I do want to give a shout out again to Casey and our Facilities Management Team for the great work that they've been doing with the sewage issues that we've had, the plumbing issues that we've had at Maine. That's been a lot of issues that we've had over the last month. So Casey and others, thank you for all of your hard work on that. It's not, it's a messy situation. I also do want to do an update for one of the bullet points, number four, that I mentioned about the Community Center at Fairmont. Lexie and I were able to meet with the Administrative Services Manager and Parks and Recreation Director for the city last week to discuss a status update on where that project sits. And so right now, the city has issued that RFQ and approved the bid already for the vendor, which is Gold PM. And they're planning on doing two phases for this project. The first phase is going to be Community Input, which we're obviously going to be part of, and we're going to see that in the coming months. And then the second phase is going to be closer to the fall, and that will be the Schematics and Design Phase as well. So just a little bit of a brief update on that since the report. And then I'd be happy to answer any other questions that anybody has on that report or anything else that in terms of activities at the library right now.
I have one item. In regard to the piece you had on here about the person who got their job, the talk with Shanice Payne, several months ago, there was a Boardroom Series webinar from the State Library of Iowa, and it was all about libraries need to tell their story. And it was, it was, it was based on or prompted by a book that somebody had written, that maybe even had a title like that. I don't recall right now, but I do remember. And when I read this, and we've had some of these in the past, it just reminded me that we need to get these stories out there somehow. I don't have, you know, I have it off the top of my head. But that's what they were talking about, is that when you have good stories like this, you know, you need to let people know that, you know, libraries are more than just, you know, books and things like that, that there actually are services provided that, you know, that really impact people's lives. So anyway, if there's any way we can do that, that'd be great. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the report. Okay, next item on Reports and Communications is Council Liaison. Okay, do you have anything for us today?
Just a few things. So we are continuing, of course, the Community Room is one of the ARPA projects, and we're continuing to roll those projects out. One that is, will be being announced quickly is neighborhood revitalization. It's sort of being called Dream Plus. The target area is pretty the Main Street corridor from Fifth to up to Locust, connecting sort of downtown to St. Ambrose, and then from Scott over to Warren. It's kind of a big area for, you know, really, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money, $4.1 million. So part of that will focus on existing homeowners. It will be an enhanced dream project for them, up to $40,000, and then vacant and abandoned properties, which is, the city will actually be taking properties, which is, you know, revolutionary thing. I've been pushing for, for 10 years, and they're finally going to start doing that. And then they will put out an RFP, so for investors, for individuals, you know, home builders, they're looking at lots. But the idea is to really, you know, focus on a particular area. They were looking for one that had, you know, a lot of vacant and abandoned properties, was had good connections in terms of, and it was really visible. And that was, we looked at many, I kind of helped develop the project. We looked at many areas, and that was the one that had, it has a tremendous visibility in the city as well. So in any case, so the Dream Plus will roll out first, and then the vacant and abandoned properties, which only, that's the only name we have with that right now, will roll out second, all in that area. So hopefully, we'll be able to maybe replicate this elsewhere in the city. But this, the capability of the city to take properties, vacant properties, which they've just been very hesitant about, this will be a lot of them, and hopefully, we'll build that capacity within the city so we can do this other places, and it won't be such a fear thing. Iowa has very powerful laws for allowing people to do that. It's the strongest, some of the strongest laws in the country. So, in any case, and they're not new on the books. So that, you'll be hearing about that. The Violence Interrupters Program, which is another program, which will, is, there is an RFP out where they admit the director of that, and I know that some staff and some community members are going to another meeting in New York in a couple of weeks, I think. And so they'll be, they'll be, I think, next week. So they'll be, there's a, there's a company that they're working with to help launch this out. So that's another thing. And that's very innovative. I suspect one that some people. But, you know. It's something I think the staff has looked at, has been vetted. It isn't the same old way, you know, doing business, dealing with, you know, challenges in our older neighborhoods. And so I'm certainly going to get to work. And that's, you know, this is what we're, it's our best effort. Another thing that is heard about, I'm sure that impacts downtown, is there's two things. First, the Canadian Pacific merger, which I am also part of that, the group that's working on that. It has a tremendous impact on the board I represent, and which is for some of the poorest that's a distraction city. And so, oh, I can't talk about details, but we have met with the Transportation Board, we have met with Canadian Pacific. They ask where you want the staff preparing a very detailed report that looks at really things you've probably heard about, you know, accessibility, safety, quality of life, and, you know, and how it's impacted on, you know, on people that don't have a lot. And so that has gone to them, and now they will be coming back with their sort of, okay, here's what we propose, because this is a big list that was sent. So, which it should be, you know, because it's going to be a big impact. So they would like, certainly like to have us on board as a city and, okay, we're okay with this quickly, but that doesn't mean they're going to, because it's a big, and we're, of course, asking in the paper all this. So, it's a big list. In any case, but, so, but it is in negotiation right now. So that's going on. The last thing I want to talk about today that is going on actively right now is the Two-Way Street Conversion. That's before City Council. There are, there will be, there is a survey, and it is only up until tomorrow. So if you haven't taken it, please do. Go on. It just, it is very brief. It asks for your name, your, did you take it, it asks for your name, your address, and then, and then a comment, basically. So it's really short. It doesn't take very long. And, you know, they're really interested, and they will be gathering some codes. So they'll be kind of be able to see where people are that are responding to it. So please take that. And then there are three meetings, because again, one of the things that was, by some was felt that, you know, there hasn't been enough public conversation about this, although I think the public conversation started in 1986. But anyway, but we're going, but now we're getting serious, I guess. So the, so the meetings are at Putnam Museum, 5:30 on March 29th. 30th, at 5:30 at Putnam, and then Thursday, March 31st, at the EICC Campus Downtown. It's 11:00 AM on Thursday. And then there's one on Friday, April 1st, no, Saturday. I'm so sorry, I'm having a hard time. Saturday, April 2nd at St. Ambrose. So we're trying to, you know, have a number of conversations. So if you can attend the meetings, get your input, but the survey is only due through tomorrow. So that's certainly a big topic of conversation that will attack downtown as well. So I don't really have anything else. It's a pretty busy schedule right now.
Any questions or comments for Marion?
I just have a question. Properties, you mean, the model is short. Is it?
No, it's not a demolition program.
Okay, it's ideas to retain them.
Yeah, in fact, I said to, this is not, this is not a demo. If we take something down, we have to put something up, right? So this is not a demolition program. So I was, I've been pretty, and I think we've had a number, well, my personal opinion, we've had enough of that. So the point is not.
So they'll try to rehab you, Tom.
Thank you, Parker.
Try to rehab you.
Correct. Yeah, the idea is, yeah, and so they will be taking lots as well. You know, we've talked about talking to homeowners, we've talked about home construction people. We've talked about, you know, developers, we've talked about individuals. So it won't be an RFP for one person to do all of this. It will be, okay, here's the, here's the portfolio, and we don't know what those grants will be. There'll be some sort of grant program with them. The goal of both of these is generally home ownership, single, you know, single-family home ownership. There is a portion of the money in Dream Plus for rentals. It's a smaller amount. And because the city recognizes that there are many rental programs, there are many rentals along this, and so that they're not going to turn to single family, but if they look better along the order, that's important as well. So that's why that was left in there. But, yeah, no, this is not a demolition program.
Any questions? Welcome, Joe. Appreciate you being here.
Certainly, oh, yeah.
No, that's okay. So, yeah, let the record show that Joe Heinrichs is now present. Okay, I want just to comment, I guess the only thing I can think of about the one-way streets from the library is that we'll put our curbside book drop on the service.
On one side, though, right? On one side?
Yeah. Just saying. Moving on. Okay, next item on the agenda is New Business. First item there is discussion of a Code of Ethics for Board of Trustees. Sent you out, in the back with some information about that. Let me give you a little background on maybe where this comes from. The most recent Boardroom Series webinar from the State Library of Iowa was the 10 Habits of Highly Effective Boards. And the fellow that presented that is Patrick Callahan. He is a former multi-decade city administrator, and then also became, then became a consultant to cities. And he has this, this actually is that presentation. Somebody from the State Library saw his presentation and asked him if he thought he could adapt it to library boards, and said he thought he could. So, anyway, so he was the presentation. One of the things that he talked about, as one of his 10, 10, yeah, 10 habits of highly effective boards was to clearly define roles and relationships. And one of the things he pointed out in there, or listed in there, was a code of conduct or a code of ethics. And the reason, what, the main point that I got out of that was that if you think you ought to have one of these, the best time to do it is when everybody's getting along. Because, because if you get to the point where you really think you need one, it's too late. So that's why I bring it up here now. And this is just to open the discussion. The, so basically, the question I'm putting forward is this, what I, what I asked Casey to send out to you is from the, it's actually taken right out of the latest Library of Iowa. This is a document, and I looked at other ones at other libraries, and they seem to pretty regularly include all of the same items, many of them verbatim. Because this, this piece, or this Code of Ethics that's in the Library Trustees Handbook is, comes from the United for Libraries Board, which is a subdivision of the American Library Association that, I believe, deals primarily with Boards of Trustees. So, and this item, as it's presented in the Library Handbook from the United Libraries Board, is a document that is set up to be signed by trustees, and then also includes some other items that they, that the State Library thought would help to help, help us function more effectively. So I guess just wanted to, you know, get your opinion, see what you think about it. I think, you know, I think some of the things that not, well, all the things they have in here would be good to have in here. And so anyway, I wanted to talk about it and see where it goes. So appreciate your input.
Well, if I could, I think, I think you're right. I think we do need to adopt something like this. And you're right, we do need to do it when tempers are cool and, you know, there wasn't a lot of discussion. And I do think we have, because of what's happening in the state and the country in terms of attempts at censorship, I do think we have to address that in our core documents. And whether it's in something the Board as a group adopts, or whether it's something like this where each individual member needs to sign. like this where each individual member needs to sign, sign on the bottom. You know, whichever way we go, why, I think we need to grow something, we need to have something like this. Like bullet point number three, which kind of speaks to this, doesn't, doesn't necessarily say banning, but.
Trustees and fulfilling their responsibility should not be swayed by partisan interest, public pressure, or fear of criticism.
Yeah. Doesn't specifically say. Well, the very last one about resisting censorship.
Yep.
Is pretty specific. Yeah, that's perfect, pretty specific. But I, I think, again, I think this is, this is the time when we adopt something like this so that if we were to get a board member that for some reason has issues with that, they would know upfront where we stand.
Can I ask a question? This is just, I don't have any opinion, you know, just, do you, what, do you have any, because I think we are living in a different time, it seems we're living in a very different time in some places. Do you have, what are the reasons for having a, you have reasons for sort of firing a Board of Trustee member or should you? I'm just asking that. So, I mean, are there things that if someone did, you can say, we don't want you to, or is there a way to remove someone, I guess, or move them from office? And I don't know if this has to be with this, or it's not part of this, obviously, but I'm wondering if, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there is. Right off the top of my head, I guess it would be, if there is, it would be up to the mayor, but I think previous experiences here would say that that probably isn't, that's even in effect.
I mean, look, look at what happened with the Civil Rights Commission a few years ago.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, if, if there were, the, the leadership, the method of leadership, this board could be changed, but it would have to be by a public vote. And if that vote failed, such a public vote could not be held for the four years.
So a public referendum, okay. And that requires however many signatures in the last and that's like, that's a signature.
Yeah, no, yeah, but that would be the whole board.
Got it, got it.
And Steve, I mean, there's just one area, I believe in the bylaws that does address this, and that's essentially for the removal would just be if the person doesn't show up for six seconds.
Doesn't show up, right.
Seconds, I believe that's the only place it's addressed in bylaws.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, just unfortunately, we had to take that action. So, yeah, so.
I just thought I would ask a question.
No, no, appreciate.
But I mean, because I think you probably, I think one of the reasons too is legally, I mean, you know, like aldermen can be removed if they violated, you know, I think it's a felony or whatever, which we had happen. So, but you know, but I don't know, I don't know if that would benefit, because it's not a, they're not conducted.
Yeah, it's almost like a code of conduct.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and that gets, I know that gets very gray and sticky, so.
But in reference to that, in looking at other policies or other boards' documents, found one from. I think this is someplace in Kentucky, not that that makes any difference, but they have, again, several of the same items in there. But they say after stating these as guiding principles, the Fountaindale Public Library's reputation as an organization of unimpeachable integrity. But anyway, as far as compliance, they say that if any board member appears to be in conflict with the guiding principles above, he or she will be asked to meet with the Board of Trustees to discuss the issue. The Board of Trustees will take action based on their findings. So I'm not sure, this is a trustee's ethics policy, so it sounds like a trustee would meet with the rest of the board. That was a little unclear, but that was only, I didn't look at a whole lot of these, maybe six or seven, but that was the only I found that had any kind of consequences for violating their code of ethics. Any other discussion?
The very last one on the last, the second page was interesting.
Yes. Don't promise prior to a meeting how you'll vote on a particular issue.
So shout out our trustees.
Pardon? So, but I think that goes to, you know, you're, you agree to listen to, you know, to all the discussion before we form opinions.
To jump after what Tom mentioned, I, this is absolutely excellent and I feel in some point of time when we maybe use this or apply something similar for us, maybe we have a Board of Trustees part of our website that, Denver Public Library, I think we should have it somewhere there as well, where we talk about our agenda and minutes and meetings. So, you know, future people, like, you know, how I was looking at our website six, seven years ago to be a, a board member, I have a clear indication what I need to be following.
That's my thought.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, this could be, it could be, come, I suppose, a policy. It could be something that we have annual review instead of, I'm not saying, you know, this needs to be something that has to be signed, but having something that we review annually would, would keep it in front of us. It also could be added to our bylaws, you know, as an appendix or something like that too. So anyway, we'll, I guess, move this along to see if they want to approve such a thing somehow for our next meeting. Next item is discussion regarding the upcoming election of board officers. We did this once before in 2018 and actually this document is from there. I did update it, although apparently didn't update my document before I printed it because I did change or added data to the bottom. I did, the only change was to indicate that it was in the second sentence, the only limiting factor is two full term, the two four, two full-term limit on board membership. And that was just following the first sentence that said that our bylaws do not include any term limits for board officers. Not indicating that it should, but that's also a consideration, I guess. So what we talked about in the past was, as documented here, could have a nominating committee that would, you know, select a slate of officers to be put up for election. And by the way, reason for bringing this up is that our, our election of board officers occurs in this July, so that's every two years. This is coming up and wanted to get it out there for fact, in case we want to, yeah, set some form as to how we want to do this. Secondly, we can have open nominations where members could nominate others or themselves. And the other one would be a succession to office where every two years, the president would retire and the vice president and secretary would move up to the next higher office and a new secretary would be selected. The one thing about that would be that the nominee for secretary would have to be a newly appointed board member or someone who's just starting a successive term, because if you did this two years, by the time the secretary got there, there wouldn't be any time left. So that's a consideration there. And I guess the other thing on there was just to kind of reiterate, another question is should, should officers have term limits? Again, since we're getting along okay, maybe we don't have to worry about that, but maybe also it's time to address it. Just looking on to the future, my term ends in 2024, so that's two years. And then according to the bylaws, if I were still the president, then I would stick around for another two years as an ex officio member of the board. But, so anyway, that's, I guess wanted to open this up for discussion and see what you think.
Well, if I could start, I'll go to one of your last questions about should we have term limits on officers? I don't think we should. I've never agreed with term limits. I don't think, now, two six-year terms on our library board, that may make some sense, but term limits on officers, no.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, it's, it's more a function of ability and people's willingness to serve.
Yep.
And the confidence your board has. Pardon? And the confidence your board has in officers.
Exactly, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and also, I mean, you know, there's, there's, the bylaws call for an election every two years. So I mean, it's not like, you know, if you don't have term limits, you're stuck with somebody forever. I mean, but that's, you know, just trying to include all the possibilities for discussion purposes.
Has this board ever had this automatic succession? I mean, I don't.
Not that I'm worried.
No, it's not like, okay, you signed up for this and.
Yeah, I, I, I might be wrong about this, but I do think that that was the case, kind of before our time, Steve.
Okay.
I'm not positive about that, but I, I do think that was the case. They did have this succession plan and it was an automatic moving up from, on the executive committee.
Okay.
I'll add that.
Yeah, I, I kind of remember that was.
It was right before us, I, yeah.
Did it work, in fact? I think we tried to do that in our neighborhood association and it didn't work. You know, like.
Well, I, I think whether we had it or not, the question is whether we want to have it now. You know, like, does it make sense for us now? You know, it's really, it's funny, like, we meet as an executive committee and this is something that we just kind of get a little stuck on because we don't really know, you know, what's the best way to go about this and, you know, and we're the executive committee deciding about office, you know what I mean? It's sort of a weird situation. And so we really do want your input is, can it work better than it has? You know, I don't know. And then also like to not think about the people, because you might like the people that are there now, you know, but maybe there would come a time when, whoa, gee, that doesn't work well. And so do we have a process in place that's going to make sense? That, I guess that's the thing, create a process. And, and we kind of end up going, yeah, right, Steve? Right, Tom?
And what is the current executive committee?
President, Vice President, Secretary, so myself, Tom and Sylvia.
Okay, so then my question would be, one, I, I would think that we appreciate the, the tenure and leadership, but what about the idea of having one other person, maybe without the longevity or another perspective or something like that, but having a fourth person on that executive committee?
And what do you see as the advantage of that, Joe? What would you see as the advantage of that?
Experience, them gaining experience of what the executive.
Oh, I see, I see, kind of like a learning, like, I, what do you call that, you know?
I have to be very careful how I say this, but not a season. So getting the seasoning.
Yeah, okay, well, right, okay, that's, yeah, because we also talked about that. Like, okay, so the three of us stay on until, because we're all, well, Steve and I go away at the same time. We're both leaving the board in two years. And so, yeah, who's, who's in line to, A, want to do that and B, has kind of experience doing that? Yeah, that, that's got, I think that's got some speed on it. Might be unorthodox, I don't know, but it sounds.
That's very typical. It makes a lot of sense because you don't have a closed loop then and you're next. Because the person that wants to be a secretary might not want to be the president, you know? I mean, they, they might say, well, I'm happy being that, but my goal is not to become president, you know?
Right, right. So then how, if we went with that model of adding another person for the experience, how would we go about that? Would that be like, we have volunteer, a volunteer? Because one of the things that, I don't know, like, I like to avoid is actual elections with voting. Like, I think we're a small group, we're, you know, it's not a contentious group. Does it make sense to actually have elections? You know what I'm saying? I, so that would be another question. Joe, you got some thoughts about how that person might be selected or volunteer?
I would say volunteer would be the preference choice. And then if no one volunteers, we tell Amanda she has to do it.
Oh, no, not, no, no, I'm thinking of what if two people want to volunteer, like, what do we do? Have a dance contest? I mean, I, you know, it's like, I'm not, I'm thinking of it more that way. I don't, I don't think we would want anyone to be on the executive committee, didn't want to do that. Because really, the snacks at the meetings are just unbelievable. So I'm, I'm thinking there's going to be kind of a groundswell here, but.
I'm wondering too, like, we're not, oh, go ahead, sorry, I didn't hear Tom. I was just going to say, we're not a contentious group, but I always wonder in the future, you don't know what kind of personality you're going to get together. So like, this works great for us.
Right.
But what if in the future, whoever's the board president, like, is not really maybe the best person in the group? Like overwhelmingly, people don't think that, like, then what do you do? If we're not having nominations or succession, then what would be the rest of the board's avenue for?
Every two years, there is a process in place already.
Oh, it is.
Two years, like, this comes up for discussion every two years. And so there is that in place. You know, so you're not stuck, you're not stuck with anybody, right, at this point. But, yeah, you're right, though. We, we, it's like the ethics, it's like we are a very cohesive group of people and cooperative and respectful, and yet there is the possibility that that won't always be true. So hence, how do we create a process that will work no matter what? I think that's, that's the question, right?
If, if I could, I believe, aren't we supposed to do to have at least a few trustees come July? At least one, okay. So we may have a new person that may be interested in potentially at least learning more about the board and we could at that point say if there is someone either on the existing board or that new person that might want to be this fourth executive committee person to kind of learn how the leadership of the group works, which would give them, that person, a couple of years to learn, because then you and Sylvia, when your term, board term's in and you're off, I think my turn, I'm, I get, I'm due for a whole six-year term this year, so I should be around. And so, hopefully. And, and so, you know, would, that might be a good time to kind of introduce that thought because at least in two years, we're going to have to replace at least two officers. So, I thought. I mean, you know, that could be just an informal kind of thing, you know, that one of the board members is now a that large member of the executive committee.
Anything else? Well, guess we'll move this along to our next meeting and decide if we have something we want to, we want to enact one of these possibilities or.
Not that, not that what we decide could be written in stone, because the other people will come in and say, I mean, the Board of Trustees makes their own rules, right?
Sure. This would be a bylaws item, so I mean, it could change by, it takes a super majority to change the bylaws, but not impossible.
I think, Joe, as you mentioned, as Joe mentioned, I just wanted to share that there are a few public libraries not, I've not seen in, or maybe I've not researched that well, in the state of Iowa, but outside, that there is an outside member who, they are an ad hoc. part of the public sector, because they sometimes can get a different perspective, thought processes that could be shared. So, there are a few public libraries who do what you're talking about.
But this would be an existing board member.
It will be an existing board member, because they have gone through that process of being on board, understand what the facets are and the applications are. So, yes, it's normally an existing board member.
Yeah, so next meeting, we'll have this on agenda for action and we'll take action to, you know, how we want to do it, I guess. I'll give this some thought. And, you know, I mean, I ask everybody to give it some thought, that just the process of how we would approve it, if next time we'd be approving a change of the bylaws or what we'd be doing, I'm not sure right now. So, have to ponder that. Okay, well, thank you for your discussion on that. Next item on the agenda is old business, and under old business, we have approval of the tobacco and nicotine free environment policy. But that's tobacco and nicotine free environment policies. We discussed that at our last meeting. If I recall correctly, that's just a change to the title of the. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the tobacco nicotine free policy, environment policy, so. Next item. Thank you, Joe and Tom. Have a motion of seconds or any discussion on the policy? Okay, so, is there any, okay. There's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Let's see, Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes.
Motion carries. To me.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Forgot to go back up to the top. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Motion carries. Yeah. I tried to change the order, not asking the same person to vote first every time.
That's okay.
Too, too much excitement from the discussion of the election process. Okay. Let's see. Next item is president's comments. I'm gonna roll that into quick board training here. Topic that is big in the news and around these days has to do with library materials and challenges of those. On the ninth of March, there was a Iowa State Library Program webinar. It was a panel discussion that involved several library directors. Some of those were Gillian Ackelman from Bettendorf, Kim Kitzman from Altoona, Jillian Rutledge from Waterloo, and there were two others. One was the director from DeWitt. And I don't recall the other one. But this had to do with book challenges. And I guess what I would like to start off, just so I don't run out of time without having said this, is I would really encourage everyone to look at our own policy on the material selection, material selection policy. It's fine policy, there's nothing wrong with it, so I'm not asking you to look at it, you know, critically. But in the first paragraph, there are five documents there. And if you're looking at it online, there are actually links. They will take you to the American Library Association website. Our documents there, they are the Library Bill of Rights, the Freedom to Read Statement, Freedom to View Statement, and the Statement on Labeling and Rating Systems. I apologize so before. And those documents, they're not voluminous, there are several pages, but I encourage you to read those and, and, you know, just know what's there. And also read our own policy, which starts off by saying, "The Board of Trustees considers reading, listening, and viewing to be individual primate matters, and that full confidential and unrestricted access to information is essential for patrons to exercise their constitutional rights. The library endorses the principles outlined in those four documents of the American Library Association." "While every, anyone is free to select or reject materials for themselves or their own minor children, the freedom of others to read or inquire will not be restricted. Only parents and guardians have the right and responsibility to guide and direct the reading, listening, and viewing choices of their own minor children. The library does not stand in the place of parents." Dropping down to another point, "The selection of any material for the library's collection does not constitute an endorsement of its conducts, conduct, or excuse me, contents. The library collection will be organized, marked, and maintained to help people find materials they want. Any labeling, sequestering, or alteration of materials because of controversy surrounding the author or the subject matter will not be sanctioned." "The responsibility for the selection of books and other library materials lies with the library director, acting in, according to the general policies established by the Library Board of Trustees, the director delegates this responsibility to the assistant library director, who works closely with a collection development committee composed of professional staff." And it goes through the selection criteria, one of those which is the accuracy of the information, which I'll come back to, I hope. And materials donated to the library will be considered under the same criteria. "The Board of Trustees recognizes the right of individuals to question the inclusion of materials in the library's collection and give serious consideration to each person's or group's opinion. A library director reviews comments or complaints and evaluates the individual's or group's recommendation using the library's material selection policy as a guide." Just want to add into this that in the past, we have often had challenges that came to the board. I don't even recall there being one since I've been on the board. There are, and then even requests that don't make their way to actually be a formal challenge. Those don't happen as often, but those have happened more often. But I also want to mention to you that not only might they come to us for a decision as a board, but I had a woman put a book in front of me at church and said, "This book is pornographic and should, I don't understand why it's in our library." The book is entitled Gender Queer. And it's a L B T Q T W G T Q item, book. It's a graphic novel, meaning that it's written as like, like comic book format, drawings. And it's, she, and I told her, I said, "Well, you know, people have the right to read." And she said that, I was not familiar with the book. And she said, "Well, I'm not saying it shouldn't be in the library, but I don't think it should be in the adult section." So I told her, "Well, I'll get the book and read it and, you know, get back with you." So I did, I read it. You know, it has some graphic material in it. I told her that it wasn't a book that I would seek out, but it was written as a memoir, a true story, by Maia Kobabi. And it's a story of her as a, as a young person, child, growing up and dealing with feelings of sensing that she be non-binary, asexual, and queer. And that, how she struggled with this and was the subject of abuse and bias, you know, as a child. And that she, you know, sought, you know, went into the confidence of her sister and her mother, and how that not only helped her, but, you know, probably saved her life. And the book is, as, as I did some research on it also, and it's, it's won awards for those very principles. And so, you know, I went back and told the person at church that, you know, that, you know, it wasn't a award-winning book, that it wasn't necessarily something that was for me, but that I thought that there is value in, in how it approached the author's situation. And that could be very useful to other children in the, you know, who are facing the same issues. And perhaps, hopefully, you know, lead them to, you know, seeking out the confidence of others who can help them along with that. So, anyway, my whole point in all this is that, you know, you may run into somebody, you know, just outside of the board, you know, that may put a book in front of you and say, you know, here we are. So, I think this book ought to be banned. But another one, in this panel discussion, the director from, from Bettendorf said that she had a book, and I haven't read this one yet, but I have it on hold, that a person, and let me back up just a bit, I also gave the lady at church our reconsideration form, a copy of our policy, and, you know, told her that how it would work if she wanted to submit it. And that's been a couple of months ago, and I've never heard that coming forward. So, you know, that may be where it ends up. The, the director in Bettendorf in this panel discussion said that she also, one of the books that had been, someone had complained about, again, it never, this one never made it, has, hasn't yet anyway been brought to their board, but is, is a children's book entitled, "What is White Privilege?" And I haven't read this book yet, but I tend to. And so, I don't know what is in there that might be controversial, but that one really surprised me. But, anyway.
The title was suggested.
Yeah, and that's just it. Both of those that you gave as demonstrations, it sounds to me like it was just the title that got the drive going.
Yeah.
And my question would be, did those people actually read those publications?
I don't know.
Okay.
But also, one other just interesting note was the director from Waterloo, who also is Gillian, Gillian Rutledge. She actually had, they had a challenge brought to their board, but it wasn't on a, to ban a book, it was why, why something wasn't included. And this was a case where a person brought in, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with this. I think I've actually gotten mail on this a long time ago to try to get me to subscribe to it. But it's a publication called The Epoch Times. And apparently, anyway, the person brought it into the library and asked that it be added to the collection. And that they would donate, after they've read it, they would bring it to the library. And the person that they talked to at the library was familiar with it and said, "No, I don't think we want to include that." Because apparently it's something that, at least it was described here, was that it's a lot of, there's a lot of untrue news in there, a lot of things that are presented as facts that aren't such. So they actually had a case where someone was challenging the fact that this wasn't in the library. And they said that they handled it as their gift policy which gave them the ability to deny anything. So, and they did that, but that was kind of a quirky thing, kind of in reverse. Anyway, so again, I would encourage you to read our policy and also look at those links. Just so, if something should come to us as a result of all the stuff that's going on in other places. It'd be here. Okay. Oh, next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. For a second.
I second this.
Okay, thank you, Tom and Malavika.
Thank you.
If there's any discussion, so I'll call for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you, Judy?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
And Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. My own vote is yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Joe, thank, oh.